It is hereby convened. Will everybody rise please for the pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Elliott?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to ask my colleagues here to permit me a moment to allow one of our staff person to make a quick presentation. Nidia Padilla.
Thank you Commissioner Garcia. We'd like to present this special award to Dr. Manuel Rivera. If all the staff could please come forward again. This is on behalf of the Rochester City School District Bililingual, ASO, Foreign Language, and Hispanic Services Department. Dr. Rivera, we are going to miss you. We appreciate that all you have done for so many years for our children and your mission to do what's best for all kids. So we don't want you to leave Rochester and forget about us. So for that reason, we wanted you to leave with this special award that reads, "Dr. Manuel J. Rivera, in recognition of and appreciation for your many outstanding contributions to the welfare of children and families as the Superintendent of the Rochester City School District presented October 19th, 2006 Hispanic Heritage Month, and we hope that you will be able to do the same thing in Boston." Mucha Gracia, gracias por todos. Love you and I miss you.
Just, I'm honored and I'm very humbled, of course. This was a wonderful surprise. I also have 10 more months here, so I look forward to continuing to provide leadership for the time I'm here. But thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, you all received the minutes of the last board meeting. The meeting for, we actually have two, the meeting for September 21, 2006, and October 11, 2006. Are there any corrections to those minutes? And I intend to motion to approve the minutes as mail.
It's moved. Second.
It's been moved and second. Commissioner, Mr. Evans, how do you vote?
Approved.
Everyone else, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you, the ayes have it. We move on to the second item in the agenda, which are speakers addressing agenda items. Today, we have none, so we will ask then Dr. Rivera to proceed with his report.
Thank you President Garcia. I have one announcement and then two items for report this evening. As you know, Susan Trippi has provided excellent leadership as the interim Chief Financial Officer for more than a year now. And on Friday, I learned that Ms. Trippi will be leaving the Rochester City School District and joining another company. And I personally wanted to do two things this evening. One, I wanted to thank her for her work here. She'll actually be leaving us in another two weeks, so she will not likely be, she will not be here for the next board meeting. So I wanted to thank her for her work for not only providing leadership during a difficult period and not just in maintaining, but making advancements and improvements in our financial management systems. And I credit her with a lot of that work. So Susan, are you, are you here in the audience today? I do not see her, but I wanted to thank her. Secondly, I wanted to recognize our interim, our new interim Chief Financial Officer. He is someone who I believe most board members, thank you Susan. I'd like to introduce our interim Chief Financial Officer. His name is Mr. Jim Coney. Jim is from the New York City area. He has played an instrumental role with us in developing our response to the new legislation that was adopted by Governor Pataki that had been advanced by Alan Hevesey. Strong background in both auditing and a background in accounting. Jim, are you here with us this evening? Could you stand to be recognized? What I'm going to share with you, I have some basic objectives. Usually, in October, I present to the board our goals, our objectives with very detailed deliverables. However, as you've been aware, we are coming to you in November with a recommended strategic plan, which the board will receive and then have an opportunity to gather additional input to that plan. That strategic plan, when it is transmitted to you, will in fact include more precise information on very specific, on strategies, both to continue improvements in our elementary schools, strategies to continue improvement in high schools, as well as strategies to improve our operational systems here. So what I'm going to provide for you tonight is somewhat of an overview of the major objectives that are driving my work for the remainder of this year that I will serve as your superintendent. So I'm going to pass this out and just walk through them. But please keep in mind that the more detailed objectives, both for this year as well as in the future, will come in the form of the strategic plan. A key objective will be to recommend a multi-year strategic plan. The strategic plan will come to you with, of course, a mission, vision, our goals. There will be key strategies around improving our schools at both the elementary and high school level. When we talk about accountability for each and every child, we will be very specific in terms of what are those strategies that will build greater accountability for individual students. Steps that we will take and strategies that we will advance to build the engagement of community and families in support of student learning. What are we going to do in the area of professional development and leadership development? The plan will reference specific strategies. And what are those systems and operations that are going to empower schools? That will be captured in our plan. Because of our attention and commitment to diversity, and when I talk about diversity, it cuts across multiple issues, multiple areas, I should say, from curriculum and training to hiring, there will be a section of that plan that will deal specifically with the issues of inclusion, culture change, and diversity strategies. And of course, no plan is a plan without key measures. How do you know that you're getting to what you said you wanted to get, that you're able to get to where you wanted to get to? So this plan will include both our essential standards for schools. We will identify key learning outcomes that are expected for students at key grade junctures, at the end of grade two, the end of grade six, end of grade nine, and of course, high school. We will be very clear about school and district performance measures and public reporting. Because right now, the state accountability system does not lend itself well to driving improvements in schools. We get data at different times of the year, data that's sometimes six months old, eight months old. It comes in a form where it's aggregated and you're given index numbers that don't carry a great deal of meaning. I think it's important that we acknowledge the state, the aspects of the state accountability system that will be important for us to include and address, because obviously, we are committed to the state and to follow NCLB. But we also must be very clear about our own measures and how we will hold schools and the district accountable. From graduation rates to looking at reading performance when students leave grade six, et cetera. That will be captured in the recommended strategic plan that you receive. We're going to continue to advance, this is on page four, recommendations to build on our financial management practices, advance an Office of Internal Control standards, and there are a number of improvement initiatives that will be specifically identified in our strategic plan. I have also pledged to working with not only our Chief Planning Officer, but with community partners on the Rochester Children's Zone to complete this community planning process to meet the community expectation for the Children's Zone transition to a community body for oversight and implementation. Page six, I must come to you and with a recommended budget. It is important that we pay attention to the budget priorities, and those priorities really should evolve from our strategic plan. That will serve as a guide in developing the recommended budget, which will come to you, and I'm looking to bring it to you earlier than I did this past year. This past year, I brought you a recommended budget on March 23rd. We are looking at a timeline that would perhaps be anywhere from three to four weeks earlier to give you sufficient time to make your final decisions on that budget, which of course must be transmitted to the city in mid-May. And then finally, for years now, we have, I shouldn't say years, actually, it has been a couple of years, we've been working on the development of our facility modernization plan. We have legislation that is nearing completion after having been revised two and three times. I know our Assemblyman David Gant and other legislators who I've spoken with are committed to securing that legislation, and we hope that that will happen as early as, it could happen as early as January, but most definitely during the period of time when the legislative body is in session, and then we can begin as soon as that occurs with phase one. So this is sort of a broad stroke of what I will be driving as far as my leadership for you and working with our staff. And of course, again, the strategic plan will include more detail. The third item that I have for report is a report on our hiring this past year. I indicated back in August that I would provide you with information about our hiring. I will say that this too is a beginning. Whereas I'm pleased that the investments that you have made have yielded, I think, probably the best results we've ever had. We had on average, in terms of hiring of administrators, in '06, 49% of our administrators were individuals of color. We increased the hiring of teachers of color by 6% to 7% which, over previous years. And we'd like to share this data with you now, but also acknowledge that this is just a beginning. We know that there are many other steps that we can take to further increase our staffing success in this area. So I'd like to ask our Chief of Human Resources, Joanne Giuffreida, to walk us through this PowerPoint. Do we have a copy for board members of this report?
We don't. So I'm going to suggest that the board members may choose to take a seat down in front so that you can view it better. And if you would like a copy, hard copy, we can provide that after the meeting.
Yes, some of us would like hard copies of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll do it for the Friday, the Friday mailing tomorrow. Okay, this is, this is provided in chart form, and some people easily grab onto information when it's in chart form. I'm one of those people who doesn't so easily understand it, so I'm going to walk you through it the only way that I could understand it, and hopefully, it will be clear, although I would be happy to answer questions along the way. We have divided this presentation into, I believe, five different charts altogether, which will show you a comparison of our workforce last June at the end of the '05-'06 school year to our hiring activity for the current school year, '06-'07, in each of five employee groups. This first slide that is in front of you happens to be the slide that displays the workforce and hiring activity for the RTA. They will follow in the other unions. When you look at the format, it's a bar graph format, and there are two bars which are meant to be comparisons to each other. The bar on the left is gray. The gray bars represent the distribution by race and ethnic group of our workforce at the end of the '05-'06 school year. So at a glance, you can see what the percentage distribution is for last, the workforce at the end of the year. The purple bars represent the percentage of our hiring for the '06-'07 school year. For example, with teachers, we hired approximately 400 teachers to start the new school year. Our workforce consists of approximately 3,600 teachers. So these numbers do not add up when you compare the gray bars to the purple bars, but the percentage distribution is relative to each other. And what we're looking for is an increase in the purple bars. The purple bars should be higher than the gray bars in those areas where we've targeted our hiring activity. So for example, in this one, starting at the left, the two bars to the left represent white employees. You can see that at the end of '05-'06, 78% of our teacher workforce were white. The hiring activity for this current school year, 69% of our new hires were white. The little voice box there says a decrease of 9%. So in other words, we hired fewer people who are white than is represented in our workforce at the end of last year. Following with that, if you look at black, we had a 14% representation of black teachers. 17% of those that we hired were black. Hispanics, 6% of our workforce was Hispanic, our teacher workforce. 11% of our new probationary teachers were Hispanic. We are displaying the information this way because in order to gauge whether or not our hiring activity is moving us in the right direction, we felt that this was the best way to display that information. If you simply compared last year's workforce to this year's workforce, because the numbers are so large, you would lose any sense of the contribution that hiring activity makes year to year. You'll notice at the bottom of this chart, and this is repeated on all of the charts, baseline year for analysis of the diversity initiative will be 2006-07. What that means is that we're going to begin to track this on an annual basis, starting with this year. To the right, you will see two pie charts. We have thrown this in for additional information and also because we believe that it's relevant information. The pie chart at the top is again a reflection of the workforce at the end of the '05-'06 school year by gender. You will see that 73% of our teaching workforce were female, and 27% of our teaching workforce was male. We have agreed that it is desirable to, if not maintain a balance in gender, to at least begin to increase the representation of males in our workforce. If you look at the pie chart below, that is a pie chart showing the distribution of male and female in our hiring activity this year. So we've moved the needle slightly. 70% of our hiring activity was female, 30% male. Ready to go on to the next. The next slide represents our ASAR or Administrator Appointments. These are the staff who basically are administrators in our schools and are administrators in our central office primarily concerned with the instructional program. You will see, starting at the left, that at the end of the last school year, 61% of that workforce was white. 49% of the hiring activity were for white employees. And on forward, 30% of that workforce at the end of last year was black. In our hiring activity for '06-'07, 36% of our appointments were of black candidates. Likewise, 7% of that workforce was Hispanic at the end of last year. 13% of the appointments in this group were Hispanic for the '06-'07 school year. You will see to the right on the pie chart, very similar figures to teachers for the distribution of male versus female. Again, and we didn't move much there. Approximately 2/3 of this workforce in our school district is female and approximately 1/3 male. The next slide represents what we call ASAR Civil Service Employees. These are basically employees that work primarily in central office and the service center, supervising and managing non-instructional programs. This is a smaller group by sheer number. 77% of that group was white at the end of last school year. In our appointments this year, 1/3 or 33% of those appointed were white. Going to the next group, 12% of that workforce last year was black. 1/3 or 33% of the appointments in this group were black. Going to Hispanic, 4% were Hispanic in this group. 17% of our appointments in this group were Hispanic. And then we have no Asian representation in this group as of the end of last year, and yet 17% of our appointments were Asian. Here, the representation of male and female is really rather different, but I want to point out that because the numbers are so small, you will get a skewed distribution. However, 65% of this group is male and 35% is female. Whereas apparently, let me see, it looks like 100% of the appointments were female this year, but as I said, the sample size is very small. The next slide represents Bente employees. These are basically civil service employees who are below the level of manager. We have about 1,600 employees in this workforce. In this workforce, at the end of last year, 45% of this workforce was white. 26% of the new hires in this workforce were white for the '06-'07 school year. At the end of last year, 29% of this workforce was black. 32% of the appointments for this group are black. 16% of this workforce is Hispanic. 27% of those appointed in these titles were Hispanic this year. You'll see at the far right, and this is probably as good an opportunity for me as I need to comment on this, you will see the not identified column at the very end shows that the not identified column consisted of 9% of the workforce at the end of last year, and that 15% of those hired are registered in our data system as non-identified this year. We basically maintain and track this information by asking every employee that we hire to fill out a form designating what their race is. The labels that we use are the labels that were approved for use by the Equal Opportunity Employment Commission. The EEOC is changing some of the definitions for next year, September '07, I think they go into effect. They are going to add a new category, which is to be called mixed race. That's a category we have not had before. We recognize that the issue of identifying who you are, what your ethnicity is, is often a sensitive and personal issue, and we leave it to the employee to make that determination for his or herself, even though the federal government says that it's perfectly permissible for us, for example, in human resources, to decide for the person what their race is and label them accordingly and enter them into our system accordingly. Our practice has been not to do that. But as a result, because some people have refused or found that a category didn't reflect who they think they are, they simply don't tell us what their race is. That's how we get a not identified category like this.
The problem with Hispanics is that Hispanics are not a race, and we can be black, we can be white, we can be green, we can be blue. So identifying race doesn't do it for us. You know, you have to either identify us as an ethnic group or the country that we, where we derive from. So I would suggest that in the future, we change the designation of race, because Hispanics could identify themselves as black, or they could identify themselves as white, or they might choose not to identify themselves as either race.
Because we're going to take advantage of the fact that the EEOC is changing the definitions, and in part with a view toward exactly what you're saying, Domingo, they do recognize that our country's become much more diverse and with many more races and ethnicities than what have previously been reported. And you know, this information is collected all across the country by employers and other organizations, and so it is desirable to have a standard reporting system. We plan to survey our entire workforce this year to ask them to designate what their identity is, so that we can go back and eliminate the not identified or not, not, or not applicable category, because we would like to have everybody in one of the identified categories that the federal government has established. This again, this workforce is heavily female, 62% at the end of last year, and our hiring, 73% of the hiring was female. This is a very diverse workforce, a vast majority of different jobs. Our last group is RAP, the Rochester Association of Paraprofessionals. These are our teacher aides, teacher assistants. They work primarily in classrooms with students. Starting at the left, we had 26% of this workforce was white at the end of last school year. So you can see that white is in a minority position in this particular workforce at the end of last year. 36% of the appointments in this group were white for '06-'07. You will, moving down the columns, you will see that 49% of that workforce was black at the end of last year. 34% of the appointments in this group were black. 16% of this workforce was, consisted of white employees, Hispanic employees, excuse me, at the end of last year. 23% of those appointed in this group are Hispanic. And again, heavily female workforce, 83% at the end of last year. Our hiring activity, 79% of those hired were female. So it's interesting to note that our workforce is heavily female, and we do recognize the need to recruit more males, particularly in the key positions in the schools. I'd like to turn your attention now to some more general information. The diversity initiative was driven by a comprehensive approach and successful teamwork. There are a handful of people in human resources working closely with Michelle Hancock and her staff in the Diversity and Leadership Development Group, who worked, put extraordinary effort into developing a comprehensive plan in November and December of last year. In addition to Michelle and her team, I want to specifically recognize Becky Torres Lynch, Alpha Daily Majors, and Laura Voak. They worked above and beyond nights and weekends to organize a well-thought-out, comprehensive approach to recruitment. Their efforts, which were then initiated, yielded the good results that we had this year, and included several of the things in the overlapping circles on this visual. New RTA contract language enabled early hiring. So this was really truly a team effort. Part of being able to do this depended on our ability to make job offers early in the hiring season, and I'm talking about February, March, and April. We needed to be able to offer candidates jobs in specific schools, and we have not been able to do that previously because transferring teachers already in our workforce had rights to vacancies, and those rights did not expire until early in August, leaving the district in the unenviable position of trying to recruit much sought-after diversity candidates in the month before school opens. Everybody knows that the good candidates are gone by then. And so during our contract negotiations last year, the superintendent was very firm that this was a top priority for our bargaining team, and we did succeed in getting breakthrough language in the RTA contract, which allowed the district, human resources, and school principals to go out and declare vacancies and make job offers in individual schools early in the season. So that was one very important piece of the puzzle that allowed us to hire early and hire good candidates. We used something called the Star Teacher Recommendation Program. We have an interviewing profile that was developed by a gentleman called Haberman, and that interviewing profile is designed and has been scientifically validated to identify identify top-quality candidates who do well in urban school districts. We worked with principals to identify candidates that we know who are working in our schools, substitute teachers, student teachers, and run them through the Haberman profile to see if they would measure up as quality teachers to work in an urban school district. This training, we have found over the years, is highly reliable, and the district and Human Resources, we plan to make a major investment this year in training a new group of administrators on this interviewing protocol. Local college recruitment has always been a function of what we do. There has been a greater awareness throughout the school district of the superintendent's interest in diversity, and that's helped. We visited job fairs. We also conducted our own internal, highly-successful job fair by hosting several diversity candidates whom we recruited on out-of-town trips. We brought them to Rochester. They were here for three days. They toured the city. They visited our schools, and they had an opportunity for interviews and matching with various schools that had openings. This was very successful in our efforts to bring good candidates to Rochester. I think we all know Rochester is not always an easy sell, particularly if you're not from Western New York or familiar with this part of the country. We believe that the job fair was one of those things that helped acclimate some of these highly-desirable candidates to our community. The out-of-town recruitment included visits to Boston, Buffalo, Chicago, New York City, Maryland, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Puerto Rico. I want to remind you that because this diversity process was started mid-year last year, we did not get to all the places we wanted to go to, and we are in the process now of refining and expanding that list for this year. We also conducted a diversity analysis of each of the 60 schools in our school district in order to facilitate teacher placement. We looked at schools that were underrepresented in terms of their diversity workforce, and I'm talking specifically about teachers now, and we earmarked the diversity candidates that we were able to recruit to move into those schools that were underrepresented. That's an initiative that will continue. We had a lot of success with that. And then, last but not least, what we call the Each One Reach One Campaign. The Each One Reach One Campaign was a grassroots, local referral effort that we developed in Human Resources. We encouraged, we sent a mailing out to our entire workforce, rather, the superintendent sent a mailing out to the entire workforce, urging all of our 6,000 employees to refer quality diversity candidates for teaching positions to the city. As a result of those efforts, we hired approximately 40 diversity teachers as a result of referrals by our own workforce. This was highly-successful and a fairly simple, low-tech, but very powerful thing to do. Also, I might add, very low cost. This did not involve travel. This did not involve any really negligible expenses. You may have noticed that on your way in tonight, you saw that we were honoring those who referred people that were hired by the district as a result of this program this year. Each of those people has been honored with a lovely glass token, an engraved glass token, as a token not only of our appreciation, but I think it really speaks to what a broadly-driven teamwork effort diversity hiring is. I know that several of our honorees are here in the audience tonight, and I would ask those who are here to please stand so that we can appreciate their efforts. This also gives me an opportunity to say one more thing. The Each One Reach One Program was the brainchild of Laura Volk, who has worked in Human Resources, has worked in this school district for 27 years. Laura is retiring at the end of next week, and I want to specifically honor and thank Laura for her efforts. Laura, please stand wherever you are, Laura. Laura's leaving will create a tremendous void, not only in Human Resources, but in the city school district, a tremendous loss of knowledge, superior organization skills, and dedication to this city and to our students. Her creativity in developing this program was brilliant. It's exactly the kind of creativity and follow-through that makes this district successful, and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank Laura for her extraordinary work. Thank you, Laura.
Any questions for the superintendent? Commissioner Thompson?
I would appreciate seeing the percentages of the school year that just finished. That 78% of teachers that were Caucasian, 14% were black. I'd appreciate seeing the hard numbers, and likewise with the percentages of the new hires. I'd like to see those actual numbers, please. And I'd like to know if this information can be broken down so that in addition to the racial and ethnic diversity, we can also look at the other aspects, whatever other aspects you can break down in terms of physical ability. That's probably the other category that would be helpful to me, in terms of people with disabilities, physical ability. If we have that information, it would be helpful to see it across the groups too, black, white, Hispanic. And lastly, I'd be interested in learning about any extra efforts that we're considering to identify, recruit, and hire American Indians in the workforce. Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer, you have anything?
Anybody else?
Yes.
Commissioner Elliott?
On the strategic plan, in terms of under-accountability, public reporting, how has the district influenced the public reporting process, Dr. Rivera?
How have we influenced the public reporting process, meaning?
Meaning that if there are some issues that we have with the way in which we report or the law, have we been able to talk with the state legislators or the federal legislators to, based on our experience, to help to shape new policy or new reporting processes?
That's a good, that's a great question. It's actually one that I hope to grapple with in November. We fulfill all of the requirements for public reporting to the state, and then the state actually releases data in each community, and they do it through their own press conference. We also produce our own annual report that outlines data and information, and there's a point at the end of every year where I share information on our standardized test gains. But this is an area that I am really very keenly interested in, because there's so many different interpretations of graduation rate. People sometimes confuse graduation rate with dropout rate. They confuse AYP, adequate yearly progress, and what does that mean, and what does this new testing? I think the question you're asking is one that we, and I hope to be able to address in September, when we really, as a district, should clarify, what are those measures that we expect, and what would be our local reporting process? We are still going to be obligated to fulfill our accountability requirements with the state.
Well, I guess, to just carry on that, President Garcia, if it appears that what the state requires or what the federal government requires seem to be in conflict from what we actually do, then maybe we need to help those legislative entities in terms of crafting a law that we're all on the same page, is what I'm suggesting.
Good point. Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Commission?
I have one other question about the diversity report. How did the Diversity Initiative report that was done in March 2005, what part did that report play in these diversity goals?
Oh, I think it played a key role, because what they identified as low-hanging fruit was, let's ratchet up our hiring of people of color, and that would be an important objective to proceed with. But I must also say that this Board of Education, Commissioner, prior to your being elected, this was also a major priority of this board, and one that we had adopted, which actually then led to bringing on these consultants who helped develop the diversity report. So there's been a commitment by this Board of Education. Then we had the consultant who came in, and we sought recommendations from the consultant, and we used those recommendations, in addition to our own thinking about how to proceed, to put together our plans to address this issue.
Well, the report spoke of the fact that we have an 85% people of color student population, and we have an 85% Caucasian staff. What are we doing in order to help to make those numbers more reflective of the student population?
Well, the report that was shared tonight, in fact, outlined a number of strategies that we have done that has led to an increased percentage in the hire of teachers, hiring of teachers, in the hiring of administrators, in the hiring of civil service workers, paraprofessionals. So we have actually initiated steps that have us going in the right direction. I think there are so many other things I think we can begin to do. You know, I was having a discussion recently with a group, and the idea of having an aggressive plan locally that helps us to develop local citizens within our community who could fulfill positions within the district, I think, could use attention. How we retain people, our efforts at retaining people, I think we have some things that we've put in place, but I think that's another area that's ripe for good innovative solutions to help keep good, excellent people of color in our school system.
Let me ask this question.
One more, Commissioner Elliott.
Thank you. Does the district agree or disagree with the report on looking at aligning the personnel with the student population?
Let me be clear and say that the group that we hired to look at issues of diversity had a number of recommendations, recommendations which we are following, in addition to other steps that we're taking. We clearly want to see more and more and more people of color in this district.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan? Commissioner Evans?
I have to distinguish which one.
I'm sorry.
You're a commissioner now? I will say that we have a long way to go. I've seen some, the numbers are much better than they were in '04, but I think we do still have a long way to go. My one question I have regarding the diversity report is, I would like to get a list of the HBCUs, the historically-black colleges and universities that we recruited at this past fall. I think that that could be a great catalyst to increasing the number of minority teachers in the district. There are hundreds of HBCUs in the United States, so I'd like to see the success we've had at the ones we recruited at this past year and the ones that we've been to. Thanks.
I think it's obvious by the questions that are being asked, that although we believe that great progress has been made, we are not satisfied where we are, and we need to go further. I just want to make sure that people understand that. We can't criticize the effort of the staff, because they have done a fantastic job. However, we need to do more, and we need to go further. Thank you all for all you have done.
President Garcia, may I say one thing? I also want to echo President Garcia's comments, I mean, the Human Resources Department, Mr. Jafreda, your team, you guys, you have, I think, one of the most important jobs. You staff the classrooms. You put the people on the front lines to work with our kids, so I think it's the most important job. And I applaud your efforts to increase diversity in the district. Unfortunately, though, we cannot hire who does not apply. And so I think, and I know that Commissioner Evans just said, that recruitment is a major thing. We need to recruit qualified candidates to help with the diversity. And also, this is the one question I have, is what are we doing to compete with suburban districts who are starving for diversity candidates? What do we do to help attract those teachers here? And not just teachers, but, you know, staff members, et cetera.
The question is directed...
Yes, to Dr. Rivera, thank you.
Well, I think one thing that I think is basic, but it goes beyond that, is having competitive salaries, and that is what we have done. Right now, our average teacher salary ranks us about 11th out of 18 in the county. I think it's important that we be competitive, because I've seen more and more young people, people who I have personally counseled out of trying not to leave the district, people of color, who've left and gone to Greece, who've gone to other suburban districts, who do a pretty aggressive job of recruiting. So that's one step. But I also think that within the system, there are perhaps some areas that we need to look at, and how we keep people in the system once they're here, once we recruit them, whether we find ways to help fulfill different social needs, whether we look at opportunities for growth and development, and how we support growth and development. All of these things that we can do for individuals are very important as well, and I think we need to pay attention to that.
President Garcia.
Commissioner Thompson?
I just wanted to comment on Joanne's report about the change in the contract and the fact that we can now offer staff members a position sooner. I think that was key, and that'll continue to be, because I know I've heard from a number of people over the years that they wanted to work in the school district, but they couldn't wait until August, September. So I think that was a critical step, and applaud the superintendent's negotiations to make that happen.
And I'd like to thank Adam Urbansky, who's in the back, for being a partner in that effort.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll move on then to committee reports, and we'll start on my left with Commissioner Brennan.
Policy Committee will meet on November 1st, and we will be taking up a number of issues. Among them, the district's acceptable use policy, and perhaps of greatest interest to people here, an area that there's been a great deal of ferment in, and that has to do with the district's eligibility policy. And I just want to take a second to express thanks to the superintendent and his staff, who have been very patient, there's been a lot of discussion of this, to people in the community, former Commissioner Bowers, Jim Greco, Paul Burganti from the staff, who was a district employee, and a couple of my colleagues, who have reached out to the community and engaged in very useful discussions. Commissioner Elliott has done this, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Henley, and others. Commissioner Thompson and I had a good visit about this. Although the committee has not met, this is a time of a great deal of discussion and sharing about an extremely important policy. It is absolutely critical. I think all of us believe that we use these activities as a way to increase retention and increase graduation, and there's an effort to do that. And I just appreciate everybody's patience and the superintendent's assistance, and we look forward to input from him and his staff in the future, and I hope that we'll come up with a first-rate policy to deal with this very important question.
Thank you. Commissioner Henley?
The Governance Committee met on Tuesday, September 26th, to discuss the proposed Personnel Committee and the Board Self-Evaluation Tool. Commissioner Elliott presented mission and vision statements detailing the proposed Personnel Committee, and the Personnel Committee would serve as a formal entity for considering the district's personnel issues and policies. We're going to be reviewing those documents and discussing them further at the next meeting. We also looked at the '05-'06 Board Evaluation Self-Evaluation Tool. The purpose of that tool is to provide board members with information about their performance and identify areas which require improvement or enhancement to strengthen the board and its operations. The results of last year's evaluation indicated the need for a retreat. That's what we did earlier this year. And our next meeting will be on Tuesday, November 28th, and the agenda will discuss those two items, Personnel Committee and Board Self-Evaluation Tool. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, quick question. Yeah, quick question for you and your committee. I, I know one of the things, I used to chair the Board Governance Committee when I first came on the board, was making sure that the work of the committees are aligned with the board goals that we, that we set. So we, obviously the goals that we have this year are from last year. Any talk in your committee on that? And also, number two, the Board Governance Committee was also charged with creating the orientation session for new board members. So has there been any talk in, in the committee, number one, on making sure that committees' work is aligned with what the board has set out, so that way we don't have any runaway committees? And number two, in terms of the orientation session for new board members?
The orientation session, we are going to take up before the end of the year. I know that Commissioner Thompson and I have met to discuss coordinating some of the activities between the QA Committee, the Board Governance Committee, and the Policy Committee. And hopefully, we're going to be able to sit down and discuss more about that to align some of our, our focus in that direction.
Yeah, the reason I ask that, because in '04 we had, '03, '04 we had protocols that have kind of just been sitting on a shelf somewhere. I think we need to go back maybe before the end of the year and revisit those.
That would be part of my committee.
Thanks. The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee met on October 10, October 10, 2006. We received our regularly scheduled quarterly update from the Parent Partnership Council. As you know, the committee has established that every quarter, once a quarter, we will hear from the Parent Partnership Council that the Board of Education endorsed. One of the things the, we heard from the parents about was working on to have liaisons to committees to go back and recruit parents to become involved in the Board of Education's work. And also, we also discussed their quest to recruit more members. Also, what you have before you is the final copy of the legislative agenda, which was, which was discussed at last meeting and you received it in your, in your packet. Two things, there were three slight modifications that we will talk more in detail about under unfinished business. One was eliminating the distance from, distance from school requirement for transporting students from kindergarten through grade two and provide adequate funding for that service. Also, a number 13 was added, which will provide school districts greater flexibility in the selection of vendors to increase the participation of minority and women-owned businesses. And we removed the item recommending that employees in the SEG or the Superintendent's Employee Group become civil service employees. That was eliminated. And I look forward to adopting this agenda under unfinished business, so that way we can convey to our colleagues in, in the state government, in the federal government, the other levels of government, what we are expecting. And that concludes my report on Community and Intergovernmental. And I would just announce that the Superintendent Search Committee will meet November 6th at 6:00.
Thank you. Commissioner Power.
Yes, the Finance Committee met last week. Before I talk about what we talked about last week, I want to clarify last month's board meeting. The committee, Finance Committee last month had, in fact, received financial reports for August, but they had not been distributed to the board in the Friday packet, nor were they present on our, our dais at the board meeting. So we wouldn't, weren't able to, to accept the minutes and the reports from the Finance Committee last month. So we have both sets, the August and September Finance Reports today, that I will ask for your vote, I will ask the President to take a motion for shortly. In this month's meeting, we covered a couple of issues. This is the month where we do budget amendments, Resolutions 9, 290 through, through 292, all address budget amendment issues. And one of those items is a $4 million appropriation that we were told during the budget season to expect it to come, money to come from the state as magnet monies. As it turns out, the money came to us as member item grant from the Assembly. So I hope that my political opponent will stop taking personal credit for delivering all of the funds that the district has received, since four million of them came from the Assembly where he had no hand. But the amendments outlined here in, in Resolution 290 are offset, the revenues in 290 are offset by the expenditures in 291. And so I think, in brief, that captures what we discussed at the Finance Committee. There were no, there were no contracts or any other resolutions except the budget amendment resolutions that came before the committee. So if we could.
You have Student Activity Report?
I, I do. I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the Finance Reports first and then the Student Activity Report.
Allen, determine motion to accept Finance Report. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also, you do have the Student Activity Funds Report in front of you.
Allen, determine a motion to approve the Student Activity Fund Report.
So moved.
So moved. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other work of the committee that doesn't represent itself in resolutions tonight, we asked for staff member Gary Smith to provide us with proposed legislation to New York State Public Law on Minority Women-Owned Business Enterprises, Bill A. 11428, so that the committee could look at what's being moved forward in the legislation on minority-owned business enterprises. We, we were provided with a copy of a letter sent to City Hall petitioning for support in adjusting the local borrowing constraints. Essentially, this has to do with our capital improvement plan and our ability to borrow being restricted to the amount that we pay off each year. This plays a significant role in how much money we can ask for in future capital improvement budgets. And we will also be provided with a copy of that information at our next Finance Committee meeting, which will be November 9th at 6:00 PM. That's Thursday, November 9. That concludes my report. Thank you.
President Garcia, I have a question, if I could, about the report.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Elliott.
And maybe it's not about the report, but I received a document that I had requested in terms of our MBE status, in terms of contract. And it appears to me in that report that I received that we had an overwhelming number of women who are, who were granted various contracts. To, to my dismay that we didn't have a sufficient number of African-American contractors. And, and I guess for me, having the, the number of women categorized as, in, in that category is not sufficient for me that we've, we've had sufficient number of African-American contractors to also be a part of the, the WMBE numbers.
Well, regretfully, the, the report has to include women-owned businesses.
President Garcia, I extend the invitation, as, as always, the Finance Committee is open to all board members. I extend the invitation to participate in the discussion at our next Finance Committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, thank you. The Quality Assurance Committee met on Monday, October 16th. We had a long agenda, but we've managed to condense the report, so I'll try not to take too long. The summer school for sixth-go-seven grades, this was an initiative to ensure that entering seventh graders' literacy skills were at a minimum of grade five. 472 students were enrolled in the program and 368 completed it. Of those, 368, 289 were promoted to grade seven. The other students and those who didn't complete the course were offered an additional year in elementary school. QA has asked for additional information on how many of the students remained in elementary school, additional data on students with disabilities that were part of this enrollment, numbers on language-affected students, and the role that parent liaisons might, might play to support this effort to enroll students. We discussed the seven essential standards. These are district-developed tenets on what every school should know and be able to do in order to be a high-performing school. We covered the restructuring report. The district has seven schools identified as in need of restructuring for failing to make adequate yearly report, adequate yearly progress, AYP, as defined in the Federal No Child Left Behind Act. The report we received on last Friday on how these schools will be restructured is about an inch and a half thick. Because of the importance of this information, QA is working with the administration on how to best process the material. We may meet every couple of weeks to discuss a couple of schools at a time, or we may not discuss this further, depending on how the board and Dr. Rivera resolve the question of whether or not the kind of review QA envisions is within the purview of the board. Dr. Rivera and I spoke yesterday and communicated today about this matter, and I anticipate possibly broadening the discussion to include the full board. The biennial review, we continue to look into the role of parents in the preparation of the biennial review of shared decision-making. The board president is asked to sign off on this report before it is returned to the State Education Department. District administration has assured us that the document has not been returned to Albany and QA does not plan to recommend that the board authorize the president's signature until we're confident that parents' opinions and experiences are accurately represented. Another agenda item was the gay-straight-alliance clubs we have. Prompted by a report of, of misuse of authority, QA has requested that the administration provide a status report on the gay-straight-alliance clubs and other organizations that support alternative lifestyles, to be sure they're being treated equitably regarding funding and other resources, as well as the challenges members and advisors in these groups face from students and school staff. We had two other agenda items. One was the bilingual program evaluation. The idea of a program evaluation was brought to QA in June, but we didn't make a recommendation to the board because it was unnecessary, since the administration had already begun the process. At our meeting on Monday, QA unanimously approved a motion to pull Resolution 309 from tonight's agenda because the vendor selected to complete an evaluation of the bilingual program was not vetted through Quality Assurance. Based on my conversation with Dr. Rivera yesterday and our communication today, we agree that there's some confusion about what should and should not, what needs and need not be brought before QA. Clarification is needed immediately so that the decision about whether or not to come, whether or not to come before our committee is made, following the same rules every time and not based on whether or not someone thinks it's a good idea. I've spoken with my colleagues from QA earlier this evening, and we're not interested in holding up having this evaluation of the bilingual program done. We believe that it would be of value. However, we're all in agreement, as is Dr. Rivera, that we need to clarify the process for bringing things to QA. Having arrived at that point, is Michael Loube here to guide me, surprise, on the process for the QA Committee rescinding?
Surely, surely. Your honor, order. All questions are directed to the Chair.
Come to you.
The Chair will decide whether or not we need anybody else to answer.
Correct. President Garcia, perhaps you can guide me on how the QA Committee might rescind our motion to pull Resolution 309?
We, we, we need to clarify the issue as to how, what process we need to, for things to come before committees.
Correct.
That's all we need to do. The question here is whether or not we're going to hold up any evaluation of bilingual program because he didn't properly follow what you perceive to be the process for going through QA.
Correct.
We, you stated you didn't want to do that, that your committee didn't want to hold up the evaluation process. But we will, in fact, clarify the process at a later time. We can't do it tonight.
Correct.
Yes.
My question is, what is necessary for our committee to rescind? That has unanimously decided to recommend to the board that we pull Resolution 309?
One, you bring it, you bring it to the board, the full board then decides whether or not to follow the recommendation of the committee. In this case, since you're going to be, you're going to be here to, to ask that we, you know, that we not rescind it, then we won't rescind it. It's, we'll just ask for a consensus of the group. Does everybody agree that we shouldn't rescind Proposition, Resolution 309? The group would probably say, yes, we agree, and that's all it requires.
At what point do we do this?
When we, when we vote for resolutions.
Okay, all right. And finally, ELA scores, English Language Arts scores. Overall, scores are improving. We received a presentation on ELA scores and they're improving. The administration and QA understand that more work needs to be done. Information on subgroups is not available from New York State at this time, and the information from the state was provided only in percentages of students scoring in levels one, two, three, or four, not as numbers. This is a request that has been repeatedly made of the administration regarding the presentation of data, as was made tonight, to provide percentages and the actual numbers they represent and also page numbers. In closing, I just want to make one more comment about accountability that was covered in the superintendent's report, and Commissioner Elliott touched on it. We don't have all the information with these ELA scores for our instructors to be guided as to how they need to make adjustments to the delivery of, of information. And this is an opportunity for the board, QA Committee, Community and Intergovernmental Relations, the board as a whole, to say to our legislators, or to say to the State Education Department that's appointed by the legislators, that if they want us to help students improve academically, then we have to have timely information with which to work. We're supposed to be data-driven and we can't drive ourselves forward if we don't have appropriate data, and New York State is holding us up and making progress. The next meeting of the Quality Assurance Committee is on Monday, November 13th at 6:00 PM, and my colleagues and the public are invited to attend. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions, President Garcia.
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
This, these questions actually are to, because I do serve on the committee, and we got the information and after the committee meeting, have an opportunity to review it. Questions to Superintendent Revere. On the AIS summer program for grade six and seven, the purpose of the, of the program was to have students to achieve a grade five reading level. Now, my concern about that is that these are students who are in grade six and seven. Why would we, why would the expectation be that they read at a fifth-grade reading level?
We had, first of all, as I listen to what you're saying, I was not there at that particular presentation, but our expectation should be that students moving forward to the next grade level should minimally be at that grade level. That ought to be our expectation. Ideally, we want students to exceed grade-level expectations. That is a, a different question from judgments that we make about what students might benefit from another year in sixth grade versus those who could be prepared to move on to seventh grade with additional support as they enter into seventh grade. But if I understand the point you're making, I think you're absolutely right. Our expectations for our students need to be high, they need to be made clear, and any judgments that we make about advancing, promoting students, we've got to make sure that that's not confused with expectations for what we have for our students.
Secondly, in reference to the New York State English Language Arts data that we received, some of the high schools. received, some of the high schools, if I'm interpreting this information correctly, administered fourth-grade ELAs, fifth-grade ELAs, sixth-grade ELAs. Is that correct? Why would, say, for example, Wilson be administering the fourth-grade ELA?
Let me ask one of my staff members to respond. Ms. Robinson, or Marie, who?
It's a special edition.
Okay, that's fine.
It's just, it's a special edition.
Okay, all right. And then lastly, the data that we have compared, a five-year comparison of the English Language Arts test, is it possible to get an interpretation of the data? This is just raw data. Excuse me, not interpretation, an analysis of this data. It's a five-year comparison, and the raw numbers doesn't do me any, any, any justice. I'd like to have an analysis of this information if possible.
I'd be happy to look at that and get that from you and work on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. We'll move on. Then if we, if there are no more questions? Do you have a question?
The student's report.
His report.
His report?
He can do a report yet.
Yeah, please, give your report. I'm sorry.
Last night, the student leadership congress met for our second meeting. We continue with our big brother, big sister training. We had guest speaker Andrea Brown from the program here to tutor us. We're continuing with our goals of big brother, sister training, to support students academically through tutoring after school or actually during school hours, depending on when we can get into the building. We're trying to help guide the students with transition from sixth grade to junior high school, as we all know is a very big leap, to go from one class to many classrooms. We're also there to provide a fun and helpful friend to students of our community and our younger generation. As we know, there's a lot of, they need good role models, other than just their parents, they need also students, kids around their age, to be there. I'd like to thank Commissioner Evans, actually, for giving us the opportunity to meet with Life Jennings on October 6th. We provided an interview with the R&B artist, so thank you. Also, our goals for the year were to improve membership. We have raised our membership to nine members instead of five, so that is a big leap for us. Also, we are going to be attending the preschool at college program at St. John Fisher with Nicole Cracker, the Assistant Director of Early Childhood Development, early childhood programs. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We'll move on then with resolutions. And I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 258 through 283.
So moved.
It's been moved. And second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
I have some no's. 266.
Are you opposing 266?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. I, I would have to abstain from 275, just so people know when I vote that I would be abstaining from 275. I think the ayes have it, if I understand that correctly, with the abstention to, on Resolution 275. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 284 through 289.
So moved.
It's been moved, then.
Second.
Second. Any questions on those resolutions?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
President Garcia.
Commissioner Elliott.
With respect to Resolution 284, what I don't understand is what it's meant by the groups under snowplowing and removal, and why Tandoi Paving Corporation has given a bid under Group A, and why the company has also given a bid under Group N.
Ms. Trippier?
If you'd like to.
The groupings for snowplowing represents different regions of the city. Each company can bid on multiple regions or individual regions, so Tandoi.
So Group A, it represents what, which region, Ms. Trippier?
I'm not exactly sure which each region represents, but Tandoi bid on multiple regions and received the award.
How many regions are there?
A through O.
A, B, C, D, E, F, okay. And then, under 285, in reference to maintenance services, why are we contracting for maintenance services when, I believe we have maintenance staff?
This is actually testing laboratory services, and it's done for specific type of testings, for things like asbestos, asbestos, and specific types of testing.
Specific testing, we don't have the capacity to do otherwise.
That's correct.
I didn't hear your question, Commissioner Brennan.
I'm sorry, mumbling, as usual. Specific, specific testing that we did not have the in-house capacity to do, that's all.
You finished, Commissioner Elliott?
And just, just, you know, I see on the other resolutions where we said maintenance services for various schools, I guess I would probably like to have those schools listed as opposed to them just being.
Well.
Other than that, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving Resolutions 284 through 289, please say aye.
Aye.
Student vote.
Student votes on resolution?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 290 through 292.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any questions on Resolutions 290 through 292?
Just a reminder that these are technical changes, they don't change the actual size of our budget. It's just that money's coming in, were, came in in different categories than what they were listed on the budget as, so these are just technical changes.
I haven't heard any questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Student.
Yes, the student, please.
Aye.
Yes, we have to, we have to register your vote separately. That's why I can't just take your aye. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 293.
So moved.
It's been moved and.
Second.
Second. Any questions?
Yes, President Garcia.
Go ahead.
What was the contract amount for, for this resolution? For, for the, for expedex?
There is no contract amount.
The original contract amount?
Oh, the original contract amount. I can't.
Which resolution?
293.
293.
Do we have a record of that right now?
It's extended, so.
We'd have to provide that for you.
Thank you.
All in favor of voting for Resolution 293, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Resolutions, I, student, Mr. Evans, please. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 294 to 311.
So moved.
That includes Resolution 303, Commissioner Thompson.
309.
309, okay. 294 to 311, it's been moved and second. Did I understand that right?
No, second.
No? Has it been moved?
Yes.
Yes, it's been moved and second. Any questions on those resolutions?
At this point, President Garcia, I'm not clear on the process, but on behalf of the Quality Assurance Committee, I would like to not advance the recommendation to pull Resolution 309, if that's the appropriate action.
That's the, that's the appropriate action. I mean, because your other choice would have been for the committee to, to recommend it, and I put it to a vote, and you would have been voted out, so this is, accomplishes the same purpose.
All right.
No other questions, all in favor of approving those resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes the resolutions.
I have some no's.
You have what?
Some no's. I didn't vote yes on all of them.
Yes, some no's. Oh, you have some no's. Why didn't you tell me when I, when I asked for the no votes?
I didn't hear you. Did you, I didn't think you said that. Okay, I'm sorry, my apologies on that. And questions? I don't.
To, no, since we already voted.
Excuse me?
Then the vote, the no votes, we already voted, so the questioning part is over.
It's just yes or no.
Did you ask for questions of these?
Yes, I asked for a question that were none, so we voted, and you can only vote yes or no.
All right, on 305, no. 306, 307, no, because I'm not sure of what, I missed the questioning part, so I'm gonna have to vote.
That's fine, go, no.
And that's it.
Thank you. You got those votes, thank you. We're going, then going to move on to unfinished business, and I'll, I'll turn that part over to Commissioner Evans.
In the spirit of, I'm proud of the board's legislative accomplishments the past year, and the, and the agenda that you have before you advances that drive to continue, to continue those accomplishments, and also to continue the strong partnership, particularly that we've had with our state legislators over the past few years. You heard about the increase in magnet aid that came from the Assembly, $4 million. We hope to be able to continue those types of things again this coming year in our upcoming legislative agenda. Again, the only thing that is different from the previous meeting, the previous agenda that you had before you at our September board meeting, is the elimination of the, the elimination of SEG employees becoming civil service employees, and then adding, eliminating the distance from, from the school requirement for transporting students in kindergarten through grade two, and provide adequate funding for this service. I know that makes it sound, I know that may sound nice, being that some people walked six miles to school back in the day, but we wanted to eliminate the.
Uphill both ways.
Yeah, we wanted to eliminate the distance for our, for our young children. And then also 13 was added to provide the school district greater flexibility in the selection of vendors to increase the participation of minority and women-owned businesses. Part of that number 13 will be hearing from our state legislators on what they think they could do to help, helping that process. So, again, it's broken out by, by different levels of government. Again, we didn't leave, we didn't let any level of government off the hook, from New York State to the feds, to the City of Rochester, and even the County of Monroe this year for the first time. So that's the agenda that you have. Before you, I'll take questions or comments on the agenda.
Questions, Commissioner Power?
Regarding the addition of number 12, this might be a little difficult to integrate, but it came to my attention a couple of days ago that when School 33 moves temporarily from its current location in order to build the Ryan Center, the pre-K program will be displaced as well, and the pre-K legislation does not allow for transportation, period. So I wonder if that's something we need to take into account, perhaps rewording number 12 to include pre-K, and then just accept what we can get from, from a legislative aspect.
So you would like to see it say pre-kindergarten through grade two? I do have one question. Are pre-kindergarten students currently transported, Dr. Rivera and the district?
No, I believe they are not.
Special needs only.
Special needs, okay. I guess we could add that, but I would, being that this is only going to be a temporary thing, and it's specific to School 33, Commissioner Powell, we may be able to get a one-shot funding for that particular time period, be it a maybe member item for that one year that, that it's happening. And, you know, we were able to do that with the magnet aid this year. We may want to look at doing that, because, and I say that only because I am amazed at what a comma or another word, or a prefix to a, to a word in a bill that you send to a legislator can do. It's amazing. That's the only reason, that's what I would recommend. I think that it's important that we keep in mind, we probably should ask our legislators when we have our breakfast, how they think we should proceed with, with that particular, with that particular issue, being that it's a, it's a one-off type thing.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
When is the anticipated move for the pre-K? Is it early in the school year, mid-school year?
It's the whole school.
The whole, well, I mean, but it's pre-K that we're talking about, so when, when do we expect?
Well, I think right now we're looking at it in, during the summer of, is it summer of '07? And the issue for us is going to be to find that appropriate swing space.
So it'd be for a whole year?
It would be at least for the year, that's right.
For the seven, eight school year? So we have time to talk with our legislators.
Okay. President Garcia, have a question?
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Elliott.
I guess my, my, I have concerns about, about this. For example, when you talk about exempting the Rochester Children's Zones from those city regulations that limit innovation and stymie. See, I'm not sure what you mean. I think on some level, this has to be specific, and I caution, I caution us as we engage our other colleagues on the federal, state, county level, because what you don't want to do is, is to remove any regulations that would protect our children or our families. And I would be more interested in knowing specifically what you're referring to, that you want to have, you want us to be exempt from. This document, in my opinion, is just too, too broad, and I'm real cautious, particularly because of, of working in the human services field and the regulations that, although sometimes I think that they are, can be burdensome, they really are a safe haven for our children and our families, and so the way in which this document is presented, I don't believe that I could support it at this time, because they're not specifics here.
Fine, let me, I'm, I'm gonna give Dr. Rivera an opportunity to respond, and then I'm going to give Commissioner Evans an opportunity to respond to his, his recommendations.
Commissioner Elliott, I, I agree with you on that particular one. I was the one who had advanced that to Mr. Louie, to forward that to the committee, and what was behind it was that as we bring the planning process of the children's zone to conclusion in January, it's envisioned that there might be some specific recommendations that might cut across the county's role, the city's role, certain recommendations that might call for changes in state legislation. We don't know whether or not that's going to emerge, but my sense was that, that should there be an opportunity, and should there be something more specific that we can identify, that at least we, we've put sort of a notice or a heads-up that this could be forthcoming. But I would agree with you that that's too broad, and it would have to be accompanied by some more specific legislative request.
And I too agree, I had this conversation with the mayor on Monday, that I think that overall our systems are what are preventing us from really engaging in something creative on behalf of our community. So I'm a proponent of looking at our systems for changes, but I don't want us to get too broad that we are in danger of removing those regulations. that are for safety.
Commissioner Evans?
I don't think that the agenda in any way, shape, or form is meant to remove rules or regulations that would help students. We're not advocating for a suspension of daycare licenses or putting lead painting windows. The agenda is meant to be broad for the simple fact that we don't know what a lot of these, what a particular bill may look like until we get adequate responses from our legislators. Such as, we always say we want more pre-K funding. But when we meet with our legislators at our annual breakfast, they will give us specifics on how they think they could go about doing that. So the agenda is, the agenda is broad in the sense that it only sets out our mission and aims of things that we hope to get and improve. We don't know what a lot of shape, what shape that may take. I think the magnet aid is a perfect example. We didn't have that in our agenda last year. However, one of our goals was to receive adequate aid from the state of New York. We met with some of our legislators in Albany in March, and they said, you should go after more magnet aid. And then we also got that from the, our friends at the State School Boards Association that advanced that to us. So it is definitely meant to be broad because we want to make sure that we maximize every single opportunity that we have. It is in no way meant to be, in any way to unearth any law or regulation that is meant to protect children.
We usually have an opportunity also to revisit the various legislative recommendations once they are finalized. That usually comes back to us. So I think the charge to the committee should be brought, and the specificity of it will come as it moves through the process.
And also, it's also very important to understand that, it's important to ask for more. We understand, I understand very clearly that we will not get every single one of these items on here. I mean, we, I understand that. However, I want to make it clear that these are expectations of things that we would like to see. So we always ask for more. We know that we may get less. However, we hope to come into that middle ground to make sure that we can get a lot of the innovative and different things that we think could help the community.
Of course, we don't want to compare that with the public, that we don't expect to get everything. So please write that from.
Right. Well, I mean, it just happens, though. I mean, I'm a realist, I'm not gonna lie. We won't get everything. But I think that we should ask.
Let me, I just have one last comment. If, and I appreciate President Garcia, what you said, that we, it will get specific as it goes along. But let me just say this. If I were to make a presentation to the state legislators, I would want to come there knowing what I wanted. And as opposed to us leaving it to our state or our county or our federal officials.
No, no, you misunderstand, Commissioner Elliott. We are very specific when we ask our legislators for something. We usually write the legislation for them so that they don't have any misunderstanding as to what it is that we want or don't want.
And I would just say also, it's important for us to look at the track record. This legislative agenda that you have before you, the process that we go through with legislative agenda, this isn't just something that was pulled out of the air this year. Since I've been on the board, this is the third time that we've presented this legislative agenda. So for example, we don't have the facilities modernization legislation spelled out in this agenda, but we know what it is when it's time for that to happen. So we have a history of doing these legislative agenda, and they do get more specific as time goes on. So I just ask for your patience in that. But I think it's important that we not, not in any way think that we can't expect these things that we're asking for.
Any other comments or questions? If there's no opposition, then we go ahead and move the agenda along. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item. We have new business. There's no new business proposed here. So we'll move on to speakers on other than agenda items. Before we get to speaker, I'd like to make, I know Van White is here, and he's going to be, because he has no position on the next school commission. I'm gonna publicly give you the opportunity, Van, to get orientation regarding the workings of the school board. And you feel free to give me the dates that where you can schedule that, and I'll make sure that we'll comply with those dates. Okay? Speakers on other than agenda item, we have one, a Mr.